Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the August 25th, 2014 School Board Meeting Order U-46. I'd like to, let's start on my left-hand side, Liz, and we'll go around and introduce ourselves.
I'm Liz Subin. I am a recent member to the board as of April, and I'm glad to be here. I'm glad that school's in session and back in business.
Thank you.
I'm Gary Baker, representing Town of Essex.
I'm Brian Donahue, Vice Chair and representing Essex Junction.
I'm Judith Genova, Superintendent.
I'm Jack Blandorf, U-46 Chairman from Essex Junction.
Amy Cole, CCSU Curriculum Director.
Robert Redden, Principal Essex High School.
Paul Lombardi, U-46 Essex Town.
Aaron Knox, Board Member from Essex Junction.
Bob Travers, Principal Center for Technology Essex.
Goodness, thank you. I don't see any visitors to be heard this evening. So seeing none, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our proficiency-based graduation requirements and proficiency-based learning. Rob or Amy, is this your responsibility?
That's Rob.
I'll start off.
So, thank you.
So, this is obviously a big topic moving forward, covers a lot of areas. And as the slide indicates, proficiency-based learning, grading, and graduation requirements, I'm going to try and cover those one topic per meeting. So tonight, proficiency-based learning, what is it? What's all about it? Cover many items relating to it, and then we'll get into grading and requirements as we move forward. The point to be made on that is the Agency of Education was supposed to get materials released by the end of this month, and they've already been released. So that's a real good, yeah, that's a real good sign. And they are, the materials that have been released are very, as Amy can attest to, very congruent with the materials of the Great Schools Partnership, New England Secondary School Consortium, and the League of Innovative Schools, which we've been a part of since 2009. So I'm very pleased that the agency and the membership that we've enjoyed for many years have been similar language, and that's always reassuring. So how does proficiency-based learning work? Well, basically, proficiency-based learning uses teaching, assessing, grading, and reporting methods that require students to prove they know or don't know a skill. So in other words, demonstrate through multiple measures, multiple methods. Traditional methods guarantee, traditional methods of reporting and grading guarantee curriculum has been taught, and when it's implemented at its finest, proficiency-based learning guarantees curriculum has been learned. All students must demonstrate what they have learned before moving on. Before students can pass a course, move on to the next grade level, or graduate, they must demonstrate that they have learned what they are expected to learn. And if students fail to meet the learning expectations, then those students are then given more supports and instruction to demonstrate that they have achieved the skills. So it's not a one-time assessment where you know it, or you fail. It's an opportunity to demonstrate you know it, and if you don't, if you haven't achieved the skill, then you're given opportunity to demonstrate in the future. So this gets more along the lines of the individualized approach, and it also relates to Carol Dweck's work in terms of mindset, fixed growth as a way of looking at things, a fixed mindset or a growth mindset, I should say, in terms of looking at things, and a growth mindset which will focus on not being labeled as smart or not smart, but it's a work in progress, and based on daily consistent effort, you will then achieve as much as you possibly can moving forward. At the time, department chairs in 2007 received copies of this book as we looked to address the key points in Dr. Dweck's information. Teachers are very clear about what students need to learn. In every class, students know precisely, this is with proficiency-based learning, students will know precisely what teachers expect, no guesswork required, no, I have eight teachers, and there's all different hoops to jump through depending upon which teacher you may have in a particular course. The learning expectations for the course are clearly described and communicated, both to the student and the parent. And if, for example, there are six learning standards, and throughout the course of a school year, a student has demonstrated that he or she has attained three of the six, but has three to go, there's clarity and understanding as to what needs to occur. Conversely, if there were three of six, and say, two of six were learned, one was failed, and three were to come, then the student would have like a "not yet," and we'll talk about grading in the next meeting, but they would be allowed to receive additional supports, gain instruction, and then demonstrated at a future date that they have learned the skills. Curriculum mapping is something that our teacher leaders have been involved with our respective teachers in their various content areas of department. And Amy, if you want to just update the board as to where we've gone so far in terms of curriculum mapping and what we're looking to do this year.
Sure. Curriculum mapping is something, it's as simple as writing down what you teach, but identifying your outcomes based on concepts, content, and skill, and mapping it out throughout the year. All of our schools have been trained in this. The high school set an expectation last year that all teachers were trained in it, and trained by Thanksgiving, and produced one map for one of their courses this year, or by last June. And this year, all courses will have curriculum maps. What it does is it gives teachers an opportunity who teach the same course, who have the same learning outcomes within the same year, see how each teacher individually has laid out that plan, and increase communication about how much time is spent on certain concepts and content, and why, and those kinds of choices. What it's done is, I think, opened up for transparency across classrooms, and caused people to not only identify concepts, content, and skill, but then ask the question, well then, how do we know students have met those? So it's a critical first step in moving to a proficiency-based system.
Thank you. And obviously, more work to be done this year. Common, consistent methods are used to evaluate student learning. So if we were to take four courses where there are multiple sections in each, which are fairly significant as we move through our major content areas, so Algebra I, we'll say, Biology, US History, Creative Writing, you pick 'em. And proficiency-based learning would apply the same standards to all students in terms of the classes that have multiple sections of the same. So we have many Algebra I offerings. So we're going to be very concise and precise in terms of the standards that the expectations are. Teachers will use consistent methods of evaluating and reporting on student learning. So what this will get us to with a lot of work is grades will mean the same from Algebra I to Algebra I, from Biology to Biology, and then at the end, after the demonstration of skills attained, schools can better certify that students are prepared to move on either to the next course, the next year, or graduation, as compared to where we currently stand from a traditional point of view. Keeping in mind that the traditional industrialized high school back in the last century, it was designed for a sort and select. It was one-size-fit-all, and if you were in that size, if you were in that model, good for you, and if you weren't, well, you didn't have too many options. The other piece that goes hand-in-hand with this, of course, is, as we all know, manufacturing, which you could 30, 40 years ago, with a high school diploma, move on and get a very good job. Not so much anymore. So it's a way to really individualize things and to keep things consistent from the teacher perspective in terms of their instruction, and also from the student and parents in terms of knowing what to expect, and also in terms of what the assessments will be moving forward. So it's also timely, when you think of it, with the work that's going on with Common Core, math standards and literacy, and also the next-gen science standards. I'm happy to report out the first day we were back, this Wednesday, that our science teachers spent the day with a consultant, really starting, just starting, to unpack the science standards, and the feedback I had from the teachers in the science department was, it was a day really well-spent. So it's all timely that this is coming, as we're putting these curricular realignments, both at the high school and then with Amy's work with the vertical teams, and looking at it from a K-12 delivery as we move to SPEC. While learning expectations are fixed, teachers and students have more flexibility. So one of the examples given a few years ago, when we were up in, over in New Hampshire, I should say, with the New England Secondary School Consortium, is if you have an assignment, say, research an American president, that's your assignment, instead of reading from a textbook and then having a typical pen-and-paper test, teachers don't necessarily need to use the same textbooks or assignments and tests, as long as their students learn the necessary standards moving forward, which have been identified by this point. So as an example, students could choose, and this is where student choice comes in for relevance moving forward, in terms of that assignment, researching an American president, students could choose which president to study, how they would demonstrate what they have learned, it could be an essay, or create a short documentary using archival photos, or create an audio podcast in the style of a presidential address. So what it does is it gets the students more involved in how they're going to demonstrate those skills moving forward, and gives teachers a little flexibility and not keep them so rigid with a, with just a textbook. So it allows some more flexibility. And then it allows the individuality piece, where teachers and students learn in the ways that work best for them. Now, this slide, I'm also going to give you a little packet tonight, too, summarizing what I'm talking about here. But this slide really helps folks get an understanding of proficiency-based learning as it relates to, starting from the bottom, unit-based learning objectives, performance indicators, grad standards by content area, and graduation standards cross-curricular skills. And then, as you see on the other columns there, whether it's required for graduation, reporting methods, and assessment methods. And you start off, as we've talked about with curriculum mapping, with unit-based learning objectives, and then we, excuse me, identify performance indicators, grad standards, both from a content area and cross-curricular skills. Now, one of the things I was able to do, it came out this afternoon, was the transferable skills, which, for example, in terms of, in terms of traditional grading and reporting, one of the factors, and I'll be kind of making things up as we go along, but one of the factors may be participation, or maybe extra credit, or behavior. So that's in a traditional setting. What this approach would take is, those are very important worker skills, kind of like what Bob has at CTE, worker traits, but those should not be confused or interchanged in determining whether you know the skills in Algebra I. You need to know the math skills in Algebra I, and you can be assessed on that, and then there are the other skills, that, transferable skills, that we will report out on separately, which are important. And I did make a copy before I came down tonight, just as an example of what the agency is showing for transferable skills, which just came out today, just for your purview, just to try and give you a little more sense of what this is all about. Amy, did you want to have anything to add to this?
No, just that the curriculum content leaders have been busy with this work for the last year. We spent a day in April exploring, the Agency of Education has produced materials this week that are organized around the Vermont Education Quality Standards, which I think you received a copy of. I'm not sure if you remember, but in the curriculum section, they're really asking us to redefine graduation requirements in all curriculum around eight areas. The materials that Rob talked about today are resources that show how you take those eight areas and you define it at the elementary level, the middle level, and the high school level. That will be incredibly helpful, because initially, when we received those school quality standards, we assumed we would sit in the room and decide what artistic expression would look like at the high school. So we're very appreciative of the work, and I'm confident they've done that work with New England Secondary School Consortium. But I think it's important to know, too, that, you know, the conversation doesn't end there. There are still, as Rob said, there are competencies within Earth Space Science class, and the teachers will work on identifying what those are and how a student will pass that class, as well as there will be competencies around school-wide scientific reasoning. And so it's a good body of work, and we're really appreciative that we have the resources moving forward with this. I think the other piece that's important to know is that New England Secondary has done, you know, their commitment is to both practice and policy, and a bit of politics. And so they've been going door-to-door to universities and securing signatories by universities that support the work of high schools moving to proficiency-based, because we know that when you do this work at middle level, people are nervous, and they say, well, high schools won't accept that. And when you do the work at high school, people get nervous and say, well, colleges won't accept that. And so they've been very smart in going door-to-door and having universities sign on and saying, yes, we will accept that, because this is really difficult work, and it's hard to do in the face of, you know, sort of political, any kind of political backlash on that one. So I think the CCLs have identified this as a key area of work that they're going to be doing this year, and this has been very helpful. A number of them have attended this training.
Yep. To follow up also on timing, timing is always good when it's on your side. As you may recall, ADL and EMS both are moving to this reporting system this year. So once again, as a high school, I mentioned the teacher leaders today when we were meeting on this, it's really important, as we move forward, to cross-reference tools and instruments that they're going to be using in terms of reporting mechanisms, so that our language is the same, because the last thing I ever want to do is confuse people. So I'm very pleased that the language the Vermont Agency has come out with is very consistent with the League of Innovative Schools in New England, and at the same time, I think we just need to, as we start to roll this out with our communities and our staff, that we're very sensitive to the language we use moving forward. That was just another thing I wanted to add. So also, you know, what should a 21st-century high school look like, besides the nice entranceway and things of that nature that we have out there? Also, you probably notice, I hope you noticed, that there's something behind me missing. So Martine, through her good vision, has some really wonderful ideas to move the Library and Media Services to the 21st century, as compared to, you know, the rows and rows of books, and obviously, there's more to it than that. But as we look at a 21st-century high school, besides redesigning space, which I think we've talked about a little bit preliminarily here, as I mentioned before, it's not sort and select, so we need to move out of that approach. Our students must be prepared, when all is said and done, for success in college and career opportunities as they leave Essex High School, regardless of what that may look like. And to think about what Dan Pink said a few years ago when we were in the rink with that training, is we have to constantly remind ourselves as adults, as adults, that we need to prepare our students for their future and not our past, and we have to keep that in mind as we move forward. So the 21st-century high school, as we look to move forward with proficiency-based learning, it should be, it should be a different animal, and it's certainly more than a building. That being said, there are some upgrades that we'll need to talk about as well as we move forward. As I mentioned, high school is not a building. School performance is largely determined by the quality of its teaching, and we're very fortunate with the talented staff we have, and learning, and I'm going to mention this to the freshmen tomorrow, learning is not confined to the building, nor from 8:00 to 2:30, nor five days a week, nor just 10 months a year. These days, we all, in our job, are continually looking to improve ourselves and learn more, and it's outside of the normal school day and school year. And obviously, as Judy knows, the Calendar 2.0 was a courageous venture to get out of that paradigm, because that's what we need to continue to work on. So graduation is not the end of the educational journey. Certainly, I would say all students need some type of post-secondary learning opportunities, regardless of what they may be. It does not stop at high school, promote a lifelong learning mindset, and encourage all students to continue to pursue their aspirations after graduating from high school. Different students learn in different ways. Once again, traditional one-size does not work for all. Not everyone learns effectively by reading a book and taking a test. Engaging individual student interest. We also will be reporting out on, not separate, but related, personal learning plans. I mean, this is going to be part, key part of the work, for students along the way, as they get to middle school and high school. Each year, they're going to annually be reviewing their personal learning plan, and see if collectively, we're meeting the needs, they're on the same path that they've chosen. What's in 7th grade is the same as 10th, obviously, it can change. And then what are they doing throughout their experience, once again, not just from 8:00 to 2:30, but beyond the end of school and on weekends and other options that they can have. Schools need to embrace the new basics. This is the three Rs, which are rigor, relevance, and relationships, and we want to move beyond what teachers teach and reinvent how they teach as we move forward. So that the relevance piece of the three Rs, all the kids I've spoken to throughout my last few years in this role, especially when they get to juniors and seniors, they're thirsting and craving for more interdisciplinary opportunities. Or, like we've done here, and I thank you for the funding of the internship piece, so how does all this connect to a job opportunity? And then, taking that experience, and is that really what I want to do or not? But that can be really important for kids. So the relevance piece of these three Rs is really important. The relationship, that's the crux and heart of the advisory, which we did implement last year. We are looking at year two being very similar to year one, in the sense that we're going to have mixed grades of students, 9 through 12. It's going to be random selection, with the exception of the arts advisories and the STEM advisories, where those are interest-based, since there has been a declaration of interest by those students moving forward. But that's the relationship piece. And then I heard this at a college, you want to have as many high-impact experiences as you can, because that makes a huge difference in a student. And high-impact experiences certainly can occur at a college and universities, but I just want you all to know that they occur here, every day. And these are some of the things that have really changed over the last seven to eight years with Essex High School students. And the first two are obviously various options that students have in terms of their online learning. And I can tell you, from talking to kids that have chosen that approach for a class or two, that has really gotten them interested in pursuing, say, additional math courses. Case in point, a sophomore who took, because his schedule wasn't working out too well, virtual high school online course, video game design. Well, that led him to pursue computer science with Steve Roberts, and now that's focused a potential career path in computer science and engineering. So the online opportunity, and we counsel kids pretty carefully, that's not for everybody, because you need to be a self-directed learner, you need to be able to take control of your learning. For many, that will work. For some, maybe we want to steer them to other opportunities. The internship piece, the thing that I'm really proud of that we've done here, is besides bursting our capacity to continue to work with Navigate and have Navigate distribute our students, if you will, we have significant numbers where Pam Hemingway, I'm very confident will do an outstanding job, but the follow-up to it at the end, the reporting-out mechanism that the kids do in terms of their experience to the community and the people that they've worked with in the business, that they've interned with throughout the semester. So I think that's really helpful. Job shadowing, we've gotten a little bit of that, when we couldn't get the full semester experience. I should go back to the internship, something we should all be proud of, women in science, our junior girls who apply and work for that program. We've been doing this for 20 years. We're the only school still doing it, where kids go out in the community. We have our kickoff event this October 6th at Waterman, and we'll have another cohort of girls to go out and get in the engineering field. Really helpful. College visits, kudos to Mary Beth Pirelli last year for Learn to Earn Day with the sophomores. They met with career folks in the spring, met with career folks in the morning, and then all the sophomores had the opportunity to travel to Champlain, UVM, or St. Mike's. Not all three, one of the three, they were bussed over, they got a tour, they heard from teacher professors, some students who were there to connect for those kids that maybe college they haven't thought of yet, their parents, maybe that isn't on their front burner. So we're getting our kids out to colleges. That coincides with the plan test as well for sophomores. Dual enrollment early college program. I know we'll have more to report on that as we get into budget season. I mean, dual enrollment, talk about motivating and relevant, that's outstanding. The other side of that, of course, is how the funding's going to go, but we've had real good success, real good success with our kids so far. An early college program, we've had a student, for example, last year, spent their entire year at UVM. Once again, there are some ADM conversations to be had, but once again, the motivation and the, you know, the relevance for those students, off the charts. Travel abroad and exchanges, I mean, I'm going to look to Gary for a minute on this one. I was very fortunate to have the opportunity to travel this summer to Japan with 22 of our students, and kudos to Yukari Doherty, our Japanese teacher, who really kind of volunteered us, if you will, to Japan, because this was an opportunity to have 10 schools throughout the United States. We were one of 10, and this was all funded on the Japanese government, every nickel. Airfare, bus fare, bullet train fare, all meals, visit two schools. We had the opportunity, as I'm sure your son mentioned, on one of our stops, we had an hour and a half session at the Tokyo Institute of Technology, and basically, that's MIT in Tokyo. And we split up into two groups. Yukari took 11, and I took 10. Kyle happened to be in my group. And we went in and we listened to, I would say, an early 30s professor who, he works on the International Space Station, and he showed us, we actually had a chance to hold it, what the materials design is for space travel going to Mars, what they're working on collectively throughout the world. And his, he got his bachelor's at CU Boulder and graduate work at MIT, and now he's teaching at the Tokyo Institute of Technology. And our kids, who are part of that experience, the questions they asked, amazing. And two of them, I think, may have swayed perhaps what they're going to do. So once again, high-impact experiences, certainly, that's just the most recent example. We are fortunate to have faculty members that like to live on the wild side and travel abroad, and I say that because we did have a few nights, as I'm sure your son might have mentioned, that 22 of us went out with two adults, and we navigated the subways and experienced Tokyo a little bit. So I never realized how crowded this train station was. So I'm glad we came back with 22, that's my point.
It's saying 22.
Thank you. Jack, you always have to get the details in there. Yes, it is the same 22. So travel abroad, we can't underestimate those opportunities for our kids. Capstone projects, I mean, I think many of you have attended the, you know, the AVPA, and this year STEM had the opportunity to have kids report out on those projects. I mean, wonderful, wonderful opportunities for self-design learning with a faculty member, and they present out at the end of the year, just like going back to the internships, they report out at the end of the semester. And the independent study and research projects, that's something that we haven't, like universally accepted yet, but I really, that would be one, a goal that I would have, where we would have a, perhaps, a senior, and I got this when we visited Thomas Jefferson a few years ago, in terms of working with a faculty member and working with a self-designed project, where there's opportunity to do interdisciplinary work and get out in the community, and then come back based on student interest and aspiration. So I like the term "high-impact experiences," and I think we do, we do a lot already, but we need to do more, and we need to build on that. I was sharing with Amy that before, before this meeting tonight, I met with two UVM senior engineering students, one of whom emailed me at the end of the summer, and I responded right away. And basically, they're two female engineering students, and they want to hook up with, once they learned what we did here in our meeting, and I suggest you meet with Leanne Smith, and then to bring UVM students over to our STEM advisories and work with our students here, as to what that could look like beyond Essex High School.
Were they, were they happen to be EHS alumni?
No. One was out of state, and one was a South Burlington grad. And that is all I have right now for proficiency-based learning. But I do have a packet that I want to give to you as well, which has a lot of this information. I do want to give a very similar report for grading, and then one for grad requirements as we move forward. And I will invite, now that we're in the midst of it, any board members who would like to travel to the next New England Secondary School regional opportunity in October. They've been traditionally in Manchester in October, in January, and then Boston or Norwood in March, to come and see what's going on throughout New England, and to hear from the Great Schools Partnership, which I think is a wonderful from the Great Schools Partnership, which I think is a wonderful opportunity to really roll your sleeves up in this. So I would extend that opportunity to you.
Do you know those dates?
I will email them to you.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions?
Of course.
We have a couple of minutes for questions.
And like I said, I will give, I will give you a packet as well.
What is, what is your plan for student and parent orientation for proficiency-based learning?
Yeah, that's a good question. What I, I've, I want to sit down with our teacher leaders and look at the tool that we have at the middle school and look at a map of getting out in front of this late fall, mid-fall, initial meetings, community opportunities to inform folks of what proficiency-based learning is as we move forward. So they'd be similar to what, I guess the analogy I would use is similar to what Michelle Rath and I did when we moved from Val Sal to Latin on our system, community engagements.
So twenty twenty is the date when we're required, so that our current seventh graders...
When they're freshmen. Yes.
Will be the first class that will go through and graduate with proficiency-based requirements.
Just listen and be aware of some of the problems with other initiatives at other schools. The maturity level and the self-directed philosophy is real important. And so it sounds like you're planning ahead, an early implementation of some aspects of this plan. And that's a good thing because you're going to learn a lot.
Yep.
What have we learned about the difficulty and challenges from other schools, Massachusetts, New Hampshire?
Some of the issues that some of the schools, and I'm thinking more Maine and New Hampshire now, has been around language and clarity of terms and not having too many terms in terms of trying to do things in a manner that was rushed so that the participation of key stakeholders, and in this conversation, there's no shortage of key stakeholders. But when you don't, when you don't provide a timeframe that's long enough...
Achievable.
Yeah, yeah. And when things get rushed, then it's not good. So those are, and I'm glad you asked the question because there are schools, as a matter of fact, I talked to Mark, we talked on a conference call with Mark Costin, who's one of the executive directors from the Great School Partnership. And he gave us a couple of schools that he recommended that we traveled to that are a little farther ahead, just like in terms of the pathways, he had other schools call us because we're farther ahead in pathways. So that's a, that's a wonderful networking opportunity where it's, each school doesn't have to reinvent the wheel. And there's a lot of assistance out there. So those are some of the things, but that's a, that's a very good question.
Other questions?
My concern, again, this could also be addressed, maybe I need to wait until the grading to see what it all actually looks like. But you said there are discussion with universities and they're accepting of this, that's very vague. Is that just within the New England area they're discussing? Because many of our people would be going all across the country. Also, who is doing this discussing? I mean, eventually it has to trickle down, and I've been in academia long enough, no it doesn't, to the frontline people who are going to be looking at admissions, thousands, thousands of them. I don't understand this, screw it, I understand this over here. So how can we get more assurance? And that has to be answered right now in great detail about how, what does that mean that they're just going to be accepted? Because for me, that's not enough.
Right.
I mean, that's just, that's somebody saying, oh, yeah, that's great, go ahead and do it, but nothing solid. So I'd like, at some point...
So in the meantime, I'll point you to the New England Secondary School website. They have a page devoted to the signatories and the language that, under which I guess they've agreed. But I would agree with you, it still comes down to, so, you know, you've received my stack, will my students still have a fair shake at this? And I can only share that the informal conversations we've had with folks, you know, locally is that, yeah, you know, anytime a high school receives portfolios from one school and grades from another and a standards-based report card from another, there's certainly some work that has to be done in trying to understand it, and colleges are in the same situation right now. But I think keeping in mind that they also have been increasingly over the last twenty years, much more accepting of homeschool students.
I was just going to say that.
That they truly do receive a wide variety of materials, not just from our individual high schools.
Yeah. It was interesting when we were going back to Japan, because we arrived in Japan on one day and the typhoon arrived the next. So we were, we along with three other schools were relocated to Nagano instead of Nagasaki. The point I'm trying to make is, instead of Essex being alone in its travels, we were paired or combined, not paired, combined with DC, Paul Charter School in Washington DC, Eastridge High School in New Jersey, and Spring Valley in Las Vegas. And the eastern schools, in my conversations with teachers and administrators on that trip, were familiar, very familiar with proficiencies as the next evolution coming down the road. Nevada, kind of, sort of, but not quite as in tune, at least in that trip, as the others because we had the opportunity to chat. So that was something that I found interesting. So it wasn't, it wasn't going back to, I think what you were mentioning or alluding to a little bit, you know, it wasn't just New England. Because if New Jersey's heard about it, and DC's heard about it, well, it's a little bigger area geographically speaking. So that's all I can share from that.
I think it's important to keep in mind that as we do this work, we're not interested in creating a system that would reduce the rigor for students. In fact, the chances are it will increase the rigor.
Very much so.
The terms that Rob has used, or that you may have heard, standards-based, outcome-based, proficiency-based, by and large, people use them interchangeably. Where, where it becomes quite significant at the secondary level, when you use proficiency, you mean and they must, as opposed to standards where we might look at a standards-based report card and they're not quite meeting something. At a secondary level, they must. And the challenges are that we'll receive students that will meet it before the four years are over. And so that challenges us.
Yes.
And then there are students that won't necessarily.
That's exactly the question I was going to go. I see, listening to you, when we talk about proficiency-based, it blurs the lines between what a freshman or ninth grader is and a twelfth grader. You could have a proficiency-based thirteen-year-old taking a calculus class with an eighteen-year-old. So it's not, to me, it's not just academic proficiency in subject areas, but I think we need to start thinking about maybe some of the social proficiencies, you know?
And that's what you'll see on the transferable skills.
And we'll see, we'll see that soon because I, you know, as I see these blurring of lines of, from the traditional model of what's a ninth grader curriculum, what's a tenth grade curriculum, to proficiency-based, how, how structured are we to be able to have those supports in place? To have a, say, an accelerated student or someone who is gifted in certain areas and has proficiencies to graduate almost from day one walking into high school compared to, say, those students who require a lot of support to get through these proficiencies, you know? Would be a topic I would be interested in hearing more about in the future.
And that's the, that's the good stuff that the CCLs are starting to dig into this fall. Actually, they started in the spring and they'll be bringing it back to you. So what is it that we want of an EHS graduate? It may be that they met a proficiency in writing, but do we still want them to be literate in a literature-type sense and take a set number of courses? And that's the really good conversation that they've started and that they'll engage with you this fall.
So I'm glad you mentioned that, Jack, because I had forgotten from a few moments ago. But this is just an example, I just received this today. And this is the agency of edu, they got the whole shooting match on there, but I thought I'd just bring the transferable skills as to what they're looking at in terms of the social or behavioral or, or other type skills that we're going to look for, for students before they leave. And these are some of the proficiencies that the agency is offering in terms of clear and effective communication, self-direction, creative and practical problem-solving, responsible and involved citizenship, and informed and integrative thinking. And it talks about, you know, proper use of a practice responsible digital citizenship. So as you look at the bullets, the letters, if you will, under the main headers, it does, it does address these key areas in a very specific way, but not is going to either help or hinder you in terms of your math evaluation. And that's a big difference. So I, once again, there's more to come. I just wanted you to have this as a, as a nugget and to actually prove that the agency did, that they were out there today. So good job by them.
So in the future, we have an October meeting and then a December meeting. So if we work on this schedule, we would be hearing about graduation requirements.
Would you like, would you like to see here too in October?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not sure if that, that might put us out of sequence with some of your other conversations, so maybe.
I'd be, I'd be happy to ramp it up if you'd like.
And I think that when we look at reporting and graduation requirements, I will be interested to, to try to move, you know, past the list. I mean, those schools right now are, most of them are state universities, and so then they list the entire system within the state. It really adds to the quantity of schools, but it, it's, it's still a very small representation of schools even just in New England. The other part that hasn't been touched, I haven't found it anywhere yet, is the funding sources, either scholarships that are administered by the schools, private foundations that administer educational help, or merit-based scholars. And how, how the financial aid aspect is going to work when we start changing reporting out and start to, that's something that is, you know, that's, yeah, and it's baked into language that's, that was original donor intent language that may not, that may have difficulty catching up.
In terms of scholarships that may have a minimum GPA or those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, all of that, we need to be working out. The good news is we're in good company and that the entire region is working on this at the same time, so. But we are, we are not interested in rushing into something that would put our kids in jeopardy.
Our kids, you know, our kids are finding particular value in the competitive nature of college right now and college scholarships by leaving the region. So.
We just delivered two.
Yeah.
This past week.
I mean, I think this class in particular is one that's somewhat far-flung across the country and across internationally.
I agree.
And I think that, you know, it is partly because of the competition that there can be an attractiveness of representing our state of six hundred thousand and getting onto somebody's roster, so.
Not to get into grading, because I want to do that in October, I'll do it in October, but oftentimes a school will report out one, two, three, or four. And some have made the comment, well, that's very convenient if you're looking at a GPA of three-point whatever, or, so I'm not saying that's the way it's going to be, but those are some of the conversations that we've been...
And we have the, I think it's also fair to remind everyone that, you know, GPAs or grading scales are really all over the place. When you start looking at TAF, then you start looking at some of the, what are considered some of the most competitive, like post-grad schools or private high schools, you know, one through seven, A through M, you know, so an unorthodox grading scale does not stop your competitiveness in getting into top-tier schools or getting scholarships.
No, and then you have a lot of, you have differences in schools that weight their GPA and those that don't. And some weight them really high. And what I've been told by college admission directors is when they get them in that they're weighted, the first thing they do is they...
Unweight them, calculate them.
Disassemble them, absolutely, and recalculate them. So it's, it's not as, what's the saying, it's as clear as mud? So I think that's, yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you, Rob.
More to come.
More to come. I want to continue on our agenda here. Next up is our data management system, and Amy is going to be presenting.
So I believe you have an update included in the org notes?
The org notes.
Just real quickly, as you probably know, for this, maybe this is new. So we purchased a new data system, a student assessment data system called Admin Inform. We've been in contract with them since March. We have loaded a substantial amount of student assessment data, K through twelve, as well as non-assessment data such as attendance, behavior. The system is quite large, quite impressive. We trained all of our administrators in August and have worked with them to build out a rollout process for our teachers. In terms of the high school and CTE, we're identifying teacher leaders. Right now, we have our ed tech integration specialists that have been trained. And when I say trained, it's a quite large system, so a single training doesn't quite cut it. But some of the impressive reports that we've been able to produce quite quickly have been looking at students' grades across courses lined up next to state assessment scores, next to attendance results, next to discipline counts, next to school nurse visits. And it's just the beginning for us. We're quite excited about the, the potential for the conversation that it will cause us to have. All of this data we've had in places. It's been in several places around the district and has been used. But for the first time, we are able to sort of see a future where we can have it at a fingertip and be able to take those questions that we've wondered about and get answers quite quickly. So we're pretty excited about it. I know we've had some folks around the table here who've had a peek at it, and if there's sort of further, I realize you have ten minutes on this one. So if there's further presentations around it, I'm happy to, to show you some of those reports or begin to, to help you imagine the, the depth of the resource that we've just engaged in.
Well, one area we might want to mention is the NWEA task as far as our ability to create formative assessments.
Sure, the system itself, the way that I've described it is if, there's a, if you can picture a house, the front part of the house is our reporting system, and that's where we've loaded our data, and we can access that data through building reports. We have something called a Launchpad that we're creating, which allows us to group students. So in other words, we can go through and identify students who've participated in a particular program and then track all reports based on that group of students. We have another, front of the house called KPI, Key Performance Indicators, where we can identify early warning signs for students and then be able to graph that over time and see how those students are doing. And then the back part of the house, we're receiving additional training round, and that's an assessment builder. Students, our teachers can work to build an assessment online, email it to their class, and build a window of time where the students can take it. It will not only score it, but pour the data right into our data system immediately. So we can take our current midterm exams, put them in there, send it out to students and have it produced right into a report. But we can also build assessments. And what Judy's referring to is we bought into NWEA, is the Northwest Educational Association, and they're, they've been around for many years and they have been in the business, it's a nonprofit, but been in the business of building tasks. And with the new Common Core standards and Next Gen Science standards, they've turned their eyes towards that, and they've been building a number of assessment tasks. It allows us as educators to shop through. So for example, we'd like to find an assessment task in operations and algebra that's at a medium level that requires students to do recall and use some technology-enhanced skills, and it will produce a shopping list of tasks. Teachers can go through and pick the tasks that they like, build a test, and put it out to students. So we're, we're very impressed with that part of the tool. We are going to be working on training all of the teacher leaders this fall in the Report Center, and we're identifying specific teachers who want to work with us to dig more deeply on the assessment builder and try to understand that. We really see this as a three-year commitment, and we're very excited about it. We have some teachers who are quite eager to get their hands on their username and passwords and start digging in.
Joe Chase is...
Joe Chase is one of them. I think he levitated out of the chair for a little bit during some of the training.
He definitely did, yeah.
And Erica LeClaire is pretty excited.
Since, just one question. Since there's been a large emphasis on individualized student learning, will teachers be able to have significantly more feedback on a daily basis where they need to be placing more or less emphasis with certain students? Not just the big pie in the sky summary reports, but at the individual student level, where those teachers have the information they need to make an impact?
This tool allows us to have easy access to data. How we choose to use the data, I think, is the work that we need to do with our teachers. So for example, a teacher could choose to use this tool and build a traditional test with twenty, thirty questions. They could also build a daily exit question for students that would give them that formative and be able to use it. So the tool in and of itself is not going to change human behavior. We're hoping that it gives us that opportunity to be able to do that. We also have, Sback as an organization is creating formative tools. Those were supposed to be out a little while ago. We haven't quite seen them yet, but we're hoping that that's going to be another resource that we'll be able to use towards that end.
I'm, I don't know, I just am concerned there because I, the concern I have is that you need to intervene early to address problems as they're starting to build. And is it going to be timely enough and provide the right kind of information to allow the teacher to know on an exception basis, there's a potential problem in one area or need more or less emphasis in others?
It has that potential. A teacher can use it and have the results immediately. Again, it's, the tool is only as good as, I think we're working with our users and the best way to design those assessments and how to use those results. What, what we do know is Erica LeClaire will be working with all of the nine... What, what we do know is Erica LeClaire will be working with all of the ninth grade and tenth grade teachers to pull our students and assess them in reading using Star Reader. It took a long time to get that data back to the teachers last year because we needed to pull it. We needed to identify the students based on what their text level was, find out if they were on a plan. There was a lot of handpicking with Excel spreadsheets. We know we can get it back to them faster now, and that's nice.
I think just, just as importantly is the, uh, different focused approach we're taking in terms of the multi-tiered systems of supports. And EST is going to be dramatically, in my opinion, improved this year as we move forward to identify kids, not, not when they are subject to failure, but as they experience challenges.
Right.
And not only from an academic point of view, but if there are behavioral situations that start to percolate, so we can be more proactive than reactive. And I look at Aaron's good work and Kathy Quinn's good work as we presented to faculty last week. I, I think this will be a vast improvement.
That's, that's exactly where, you know, I was hoping.
During our, during our ELT, our Educational Leadership Team Summit, when the training occurred, I have to admit, I was shocked at how robust the system actually is. And one of the, um, parts that they're currently designing and developing are personalized learning plans. It's all under development now, but they're really interested in learning about what Vermont wants to put in a personalized learning plan and how those will be connected to our data. So, you know, that's another opportunity that lays ahead, that lies ahead for us to look at this system and, and the services it can provide. It's all very new. I think that, I, I will caution all of us that it's going to take us some time, time to learn the system. There's been a lot of upfront time as far as collaboration, K through twelve, as far as what are the assessments that we're loading in and our local assessment plans. Amy's done incredible work with, I think, the area of literacy in math. Because we're shifting to Common Core state standards, we're looking at different tools or assessments that will give us that feedback unless we start creating some through what this bank has available for us. So there's a lot of work, but I have to say to date that we've hired a data manager, that we've purchased the system and that we've loaded all the 2013 data and that we've begun the training all in one year has been quite an accomplishment. And this year, it's really ongoing training and understanding more of the capabilities of the system and our ethical and moral use of student data. Because we will have a lot more data available, readily available. And what does that look like? And how do we use it through the lens of student growth and development?
Has this become the educational record? Is it available for parents or students to view themselves?
There's a, um, the sys... The system is huge. The system has the ability to be able to have a, a student login, a parent login. The point that we're at right now is focusing on efficacy of data. So as we pull it up, we, is the data right? Is something funny about it? So I think it's going to be a little while before we're going to be comfortable with that piece. It speaks to Power School. So, um, data that's put into Power School that's, that automatically uploads every night would be a new student who comes in, attendance data, nurse visits. Data that will be moved up intentionally will be things like grades have closed, we've just assessed all ninth graders, those kinds of things. And so as we think about student or parent access, we just want to be really cautious about making sure that everything's right in there and that it's understandable. So we need a little bit of time, I think, to work through what that would look like.
I was just going to say, I think you need a plan for both proficiency-based and for data management to be migrated back at the secondary level at, at, uh, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grades. The students need to be comfortable in that environment before they get here.
That's the plan. Our middle schools are planning standard-based reporting systems this year. Proficiency-based learning, um, is the work of the middle school team. Our K five, K, K five system has had standard-based reporting now for five years, I would say.
Longer than I've been here.
Five years.
Yeah.
But, but, but the high school isn't moving towards standard-based grades, right?
Well, um, when we talk about proficiencies, what we've done and what you'll see in the graduation requirements is all of those are based on EQS standards and the Vermont frameworks and the GEs and the Common Core state standards and the Next Gen Science standards. They've taken all of those and created those graduation proficiencies. So it all feeds into the same system. And what, what's really helpful about this document is that, um, it illustrates that when people get concerned about Common Core state standards, there's just two areas that the Common Core state standards are really addressing. The Next Gen Science standards, the framework, Vermont framework, um, and GEs are still alive and well in our school. So our teachers are teaching to four or five, especially our elementary teachers, to four or five different sets of standards. So you can see the complexity of that. And so as the students start to know what those standards are and what's required of them, that'll feed very nicely into what the high school proficiency-based standards, um, or graduation requirements will be. So it's a...
Okay. I, I think it's just, I think it goes to the first point of...
The language.
The language.
Absolutely.
Is it's, you know, proficiency learning.
We don't want to confuse...
And then proficiency standards-based, and so it just starts to keep, yeah.
I, I'm with you.
So it's, we should just like the Hershey bar and the Milky Way, you know, something, make it more distinct. It's my suggestion.
Think of our wellness now. Thank you. We're not talking Hershey bars and books.
Thank you, thank you, board chair.
Thank you for that information, Amy, it was, it was useful. Moving on, uh, principals' reports. Before we go into that, I want to, you know, call attention to the board. Uh, what was in the org notes here is that, uh, principals will be, uh, will be providing any updates if necessary. The, the principals' reports are already included in our org notes here. And, uh, if you had any questions about them, to route that, route them through the board chair and the superintendent so we could be prepared. Frankly, I don't think I received any questions from board members on principals' reports. Uh, so I didn't forward anything on. I guess I should be more proactive in that and say, tell the superintendent and our principals, I didn't receive anything. Because I, you may be, did we get them or did we not get them? So I, I, I need to be more disciplined on that. But nevertheless, um, Rob, do you have any updates to your reports tonight that were...
The only thing that I would add under action plan priorities, though, and what Amy and Rob spoke about with Admin Inform, one of our action plan priorities has been to, um, begin of, to form, to form our pilot data team that's going to be focusing on math and English at the sophomore level. So that's not in the report, but that's some work that we've been doing.
It was an excellent report. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Erin?
I just had a question about Rob's report. How often do you have classes ask you to have tours like that?
Just about every year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I was just thinking along the lines of some of the conversations we've had about trying to collect alumni data, that, you know, if we had forty-two of them, kind of a captive audience.
We had, um, this is another... This is another conversation I'll have to have with our booster president, but, uh, they were thirsting for Essex High gear. But of course, it was a Saturday morning at eleven, so I was about the only show in town. I didn't have keys to the kingdom for sweatshirts and things of that nature, but it's...
Did you, did you get any contact info on, on the people that came? I guess where I'm going with this is maybe we should come up with some kind of a, I don't know.
I'm happy to have that conversation at any time.
What did that, so was it, was the request for the tour kind of, it funneled to you through the boosters?
No, it was directly to me with a student who I had twenty years ago.
Okay. Because I'm just thinking, even if we had like a form that they could just fill out and give us their mailing address and their email, I mean bam, you know, then we can just really start creating a, a spreadsheet and start actively, you know, because if they so actively reached out to you, I'm thinking maybe they'd, and they wanted all that gear. I mean, that's an example of people that really want to be engaged as an alumni, so...
Is that a role for the communications team, maybe?
To do that work?
I think it's worth talk, we've taught, we, this has come up a few times and...
We all start on this topic on a, a couple of different occasions, uh, in the, over the past couple of years or so. And it might be something we need to go back and readdress. I, I particularly think, my anecdotal observation is that with the explosion of social media available today, it's much easier, heck, personal story. I, my high school class has over sixty percent participation on a Facebook page. And this is a class that graduated thirty-plus years ago, okay? I think, I think, uh, recent alumni of EHS are much more technically savvy or are connected this way. And, and, and there are tools out there that exist to help connect these people. Now, and once they're connected, what do we do with that, right?
And it's very cost-efficient.
And it's very cost-efficient. And it might be time to come back and, and readdress these, these kinds of opportunities, so.
Following that idea, CTE's now launched three Facebook pages for three separate programs. And the goal is to be able to, from the moment they come in from Step Up Day, grab their contact information and follow them and send them out information. Once they come in as accepted students, continue that relationship. So when they're completers, we have a platform to send them our, uh, three and, three, six-month and three-year survey that we're required to complete by.
And I would just add, Liz, I appreciate the thought of having this being a communication committee initiative, but as I think more about it, it may be more U46-centric than perhaps, uh, a Westford or our colleagues at Prudential Committee.
I would, I would agree with that.
You know, that this may be something we, specific to U46 because, uh, not to disparage, you know, people, I'm, I'm a EHS graduate, I'm not a ADL graduate, for example, or a Essex middle school.
I'm a CSU graduate.
Right, right. That's, I, I think that type of association is what we need to, uh, understand and cultivate, you know?
Last summer, I had the class of seventy-three for a tour, and I did not have any of them in school. Just to make that point.
One of the, one of the, um, things found in both principals' report and something that, before we, um, leave this agenda topic that I think would be helpful for the board to talk about, is if there's a board role or any expectations for September eighteenth, which is, um, open house night for both CTE and U46. And sometimes, uh, it would be nice for our principals to know, are board members planning to attend? Do you want to be introduced? When that's going to happen, so it can be a little bit more coordinated. I just think it'd be really helpful to have five minutes of conversation just about the expectations for that night.
Why would you like us to let you know? Because, I mean, I'm, I'm planning on being there. Do you, you, is there a certain date that you'd like us to get back to by, maybe?
Um, I just think the sooner, you know, if there's a plan to be there. And I think, I always look at Brian because I think sometimes you're there in a parent role and that's your focus and you want to resume that focus. Uh, what the PC board did is, uh, they've, um, asked us to warn those, their open houses throughout all four schools. They're all planning to be in attendance. And for those that are parents, they will be there in attendance as parents, but other board members will play the lead role so that you don't have to compromise your parent have that night. So I just, it was a five-minute conversation by the Prudential Committee that I thought was really helpful as far as clarity of just knowing, are you there as a parent? Do you still want to be introduced? Will you be there at six when it opens up? Or, uh, is there going to be a staggered time for introductions?
In the past, we've tried a staggered time, uh, with CTE going first. It's kind of interesting how a lot of Essex parents without CTE kids wander into that and then get up and leave, but we haven't talked about staggered yet.
I think if I got, Judy, if they, if the board members communicated to you and you let me know two days in advance, I would be fine. We could get whatever you needed, if you wanted, uh, just to be introduced, if you wanted to table, if you wanted... I mean, it's, it's been all over the place. Just let me know what you want, and we can make it happen.
And if you want a table, that I need to know even more in advance because if you want your bio sheet, uh, available. It, it all depends on what your desire is. Oftentimes, that's the night that parents come in and their school board isn't their first focus area in any way, shape, or form. They're really about meeting teachers and understanding their student schedules. And so I think the efficacy of your presence, um, should just be something where we're planned, where, you know, all need to be there. And if you'd like to be introduced, so it's nice for people to make at least that connection because it's an engagement opportunity.
The two items I was passing around, we were talking, um, the NEASC communication, the date is the fourteenth, I received it three days ago. And the ACT, it was embargoed until the twentieth. So it couldn't have appeared in the org notes, so...
Who, the ACT was embargoed by whom?
The results were embargoed by ACT.
Oh, ACT embargoed.
Until the twentieth. That was the commu, that's the first bold letter I get, to hold it all until the twentieth. So very, very positive scores, uh, most very good, a couple dips here and there. They give you a five-year trend. Obviously, each class is different from the other, but I would say favorable as a general comment, pleased. And then the NEASP says Sue Salto is a teacher leader, uh, chairing the work that's being done on the two-year report, which we'll be compiling this year.
The turnaround time?
On which?
ACT. The turnaround time is very quick.
Yeah.
One, one ACT question, Rob, that I have. It looks like we had a fifty percent more participation total tested. You know, typically a hundred and sixties, a hundred and forties, a hundred and thirties, and then bingo, it popped up to two hundred and seven. What, do, is there any data to suggest why we had more students take the ACT in two thousand and fourteen than in the past?
You know, that's a good question. I think a couple of things have, have played into it. I think the, uh, the plan, which is given to all sophomores and the reporting out and the connection, now that we've done this a few years, from the counselors to the students. And there's a parent night for parents that come to that, as kind of laying a more solid foundation as to, the plan is kind of a precursor for the ACT, so as the student, you know, matriculates through.
Right.
And I also think it speaks to this particular class.
Okay.
The two thousand and fourteen class.
As a teacher, Rob, they say it speaks to learning sounds, too.
Yeah. True.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what that, they gravitate towards, I think. Yeah, that's...
I was going to ask you, does, what, what does correlate to the numbers in SAT? In other words, are these numbers going up as SATs going down? Do we know, or did we have about the same amount?
I don't have the SATs right now. As a matter of fact, we got to get those before school report.
That'd just be interesting to see, if maybe...
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, the SATs did announce at the beginning of the summer that they're reorienting their tests completely to many of the things that are ACT.
And they might be pushing people who are, who are a little concerned about how are they reorienting?
Well, I think based on the competition of numbers, we're not isolated case. But they're, they're really becoming a very much like an ACT test. Because they're just, I think their numbers were down across the country.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Bob, thank you, Rob, for your principals' reports. Well done. Next up is our U46 day follow-up. We had included in the org notes here, um, first of all, you may recall, when we had our, our planning day, we, we focused on our, uh, appreciative inquiry topics and, and our appreciative inquiry, uh, trainings on, uh, trying to remember the exact title for what we had there, but envisioning a, a new EHS or a, and, and for those of us, I know certainly those of us from our room tonight and those of us who may be watching us on RETN, if you haven't experienced what the new look EHS is, uh, you should come out and take a look and see how, how things have, have, uh... how, how things have, have changed. I know we have included in our org notes here, uh, the, the before and after picture of what the front entrance courtyard looks like. And, uh, but nevertheless, uh, we have gone through our, uh, training with Mary Jane Shelley on appreciative inquiry. And we have work that's going to be ongoing into this upcoming year, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, with a community engagement planned for June of next year.
Twenty-four.
June twenty-fourth. We've already, I knew we had the dates that I didn't have it written here. But, uh, um, I would, uh, maybe I just wanna open up the floor to, to the board members here from the, uh, planning day follow-up, if we had accomplished what we set out to accomplish. Where are, where are we with what we wanna get done in two thousand, in FY fifteen, the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year? Uh, I don't know. Brian, can, can you help lead this, this discussion or, or Liz?
Um, I can, I mean, I can help and I, I think we were, we were there. So, um, I think we focused quite a bit on the existing visioning and the appreciative inquiry. There was some interest by the board to still have a goal-setting process. And that, that can, um, should be attentive to what the annual work plan is that's included in the org notes, um, I think just so that we have capacity sensitivity, um, there. I think to recognize the minute show it, we did have, uh, maybe some youthful exuberance while we met, uh, during our planning day, that this meeting we would be, um, talking about grading and maybe making some changes. I think we had talked about UVM coming in and, and trying to get a better handle on what is that post-secondary side. Um, that hasn't happened. And so, you know, that issue still is there, um, and graduation requirements. So there, there's a number of issues that, that I don't think we teased out completely. But we, we did make a sort of a further commitment or a continued commitment to the visioning and appreciative inquiry stuff.
And I would just say for the viewers, just, um, the topic that we addressed was a very small one. It was intentional to be small and it was communicating and the, um, an entrance to unlimited possibilities. And we were really looking at the entrance. And I will say from a parent and a board point of view, there's been a lot of comments about the change in the, in the landscaping and in the front entrance. And so for people who showed up at that night, which was well-attended and I think really positive, um, a model to see how appreciative inquiry can work for framing questions. To now see that work is being done from that is, I think, a really positive thing for the school and the community around this. And I see a lot of potential. The dates are June twenty-fourth and June twenty-fifth to dive deeper into, um, a conversation about, about a lot of these topics. And, um, and I am excited about that based on what we experi, what, what we experienced with this first kind of smaller experiment about what that could look like. I think it was really positive and, and I am hearing a lot of positive feedback around some changes that have happened over the summer here.
Any other comments? Al, Aaron, Gary?
I think it looks great.
No, I, and, and I have seen, um, some email comments come on about the improvements, not just Superintendent De Nova here at, at E, EHS and, but also other, other schools in, in, in our supervisor union that have had some improvements to them, you know?
And again, just for viewers who might be paying attention, the, uh, the one campus concept of the next meeting in June is the bigger, is what we're hoping to address next, to really work towards CTE and EHS and what this campus can communicate through, um, some changes that we, we can take part in, which is, um, so, so stay tuned. Because I think there's gonna be some really, um, really interesting and exciting engagement opportunities for the community around, around this conversation.
Right. It's interesting, you know, just to that note, we talk about, uh, twenty-first century learning opportunities and having the, the physical infrastructure in place to do that. And, and it's, it got me thinking that maybe by, you know, by the time these twenty-first century initiatives are actually in place and manifest, twenty percent of the twenty-first century will already have been gone, okay? Because if we're, if we're talking, you know, the year two thousand twenty, you know, kind of thing, that, that, uh, you know, and so the time to move on these things is now, so we can really affect, affect the future. Uh, pretty soon, twenty-first century learning is not gonna be, it's gonna be a blase term, you know, as, as time marches on. So, anyway, just my little comment there. Anything else about the, uh, the planning day follow-up?
The only thing I was gonna ask was basically what Brian just briefly, briefly brought up was, uh, the discussion about the, um, the grading scale. And I was just wondering how that, you know, was just gonna kind of fall into, you know, like Rob's presentations. Cause I, I do think that's always been one of those kind of, it's been a dangling topic for a little while. And I think, uh, I think it would be great if we could maybe see some closure on that. But I, I don't know, I guess, I guess I'm unsure as far as how the process could work on that.
So let me, I, I wanna, I wanna thank you for raising that, Erin. I've put a grading scale as a future agenda item for us to discuss because I do see how that may dovetail in with, with, with proficiency learning and, uh, graduation requirements, et cetera, kind of coming together. So we'll just hold that for a second. We'll talk about that in future agenda items.
And I just add that, um, Principal Reardon is scheduling a meeting with Brian and Mark Floyd to continue that conversation. So we're working it through the administrative ranks.
Mm-hmm.
So it's alive and well, still that conversation.
I think there was, during the planning day, we also recognized that Mary Jane's work with the board directly has concluded. And that she'll be switching now just over to the core planning team.
Yeah.
But we, I think in the waning hours of our meeting, we, we had thought that continued engagement in some type would be good for us to do, um, with an appreciative lens or appreciative questioning. And that, you know, our schedule is set up so that we have engagement months. Uh, we don't have anything planned during them. September, there's a few of them, um, that are listed on the, on the board meeting. But I think there's at least three months in which there's engagement opportunities in which we could come at three o'clock or have something at six-thirty or do something on a different day than a Monday to try to be more flexible and, and convenient to our stakeholders. So that's still out there. Um, you know, planning those takes some time. So the, I think the board, you know, we could take that up in October, but we'll, we'll, we may miss, uh, you know, a number of opportunities. It's another hanging one of whether we wanna, whether we wanna change ourselves in the effort to be of, of greater engagement. Cause we know that it's, it's hard to fill this room.
Well, if you think about it, we, you know, we had really good attendance at the one that we did, we did, you know, we did previously. And then we had the plan to do the larger event for June. So I'm kind of taking a quick glance at the calendar and with February, we don't have a meeting scheduled in. So I'm thinking, cause I'm almost thinking it would really be nice to maybe try to have another type of event, maybe the one that we have just, you know, the first one that we did, which, um, might help kind of keep things going a little bit. It seems like it would be, and then just to wait all the way until June.
Yeah.
A long time.
We need to keep the momentum going, you know?
It doesn't have to be an event, I don't think.
It doesn't have to be a giant.
I think, I, in fact, I think it needs to start before February if you want to engage the community in June. Right. And get people in the community interested in the conversations and, and in shaping the way that night is gonna look. Um, and that's the work of the core planning team, I think, as Mary Jane described it to me anyway. Um, and I think that work is, and maybe that's communications. I think that, that work really needs to happen now, following up more information about what happened with that event that we had and how that, and now we can say, look what happened as a result of that meeting. It's a nice way to say, you talk, we act, this is, this is gonna work. But I think that outreach and communication needs to start certainly this fall. I don't, um, the sooner the better to get people committed to coming, um, to, to meeting a couple of hours a, a month at, to, to shape what that's gonna look like. And I'd be really interested in working on that.
I, I, you know, I, 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 per speaking for myself, I, I would wholeheartedly agree. And this might be, uh, Director Travers, Principal Reardon, an opportunity for the board on the evening of the parents' visitor, open house that night, for us just to stand up and acknowledge, look, we, we took this initiative last year, you all have come through, you see these changes here. Here's our, the board's vision of what's going on. Please come talk to us between classes or something. I think might be a good, a good opportunity that's happening in the near term that would get this message out to the, uh, to our community.
And it's a good opportunity to engage the students themselves in the conversation because it's the beginning of the year, it's time to get them in. The kids that are interested in having this conversation will be invaluable to, to the, to this conversation. So if we could identify even a few leaders who, um, within the CTE and EHS who might be willing to, to, to be part of these conversations, I think we'd all be much stronger for that.
No problem.
All right, I'm gonna circle back on this topic later on this evening. But though, anything else about the, uh, the planning day follow-up on this? Cause hearing none, I'll go ahead and continue down. Our next topic is our Act one fifty-three waiver. And, uh, Superintendent De Nova, you're gonna, will you take, take us through that, okay?
Um, so we submitted another waiver, uh, requesting an alternative to providing, um, special education ser, services at the SU level. We have moved all of our services to the SU budget, uh, and we do provide through the SU with the exception of our teachers. And our teachers are still located in their, in their, in their districts. Um, we've, we did before, the, uh, policy committee worked on developing a policy and procedure to help with transfer of staff and seniority and all the, uh, needs that would be required as far as meeting Act one fifty-three requirements as far as shifting our teachers. So we have a policy and procedural approach to doing that. During negotiations, we were able to, uh, include the policy and procedure approach in our negotiated agreement. So the work that we've been doing was submitted to the state and we have been granted a one-year waiver. I think it's incumbent upon us to continue to collect evidence that we are providing services for our special education population in the most effective and efficient way. And that is the spirit and intent of the law. And if there, if we can, um, meet that spirit and intent through our policy and procedure, then I would advocate that the board, um, submit a renewal to the waiver request for the coming year. And in, in the meantime, acquire the, um, evidence that we need to show that what we're currently doing works. And I don't believe there's a cookie cutter way of doing it. I don't believe that solves all the needs and issues. I think we have geographic, um, opportunity. I think our, our population and our size of our schools, um, I think the fact that we have four schools, under the Prudential Committee's guidance, um, and the proximity to the high school. There's many ways to share staff and we have a proven track record of shared staff, staff services, uh, in our SU. It's not a new way of, uh, realizing efficiencies. It's longstanding and, um, continue to build upon that. But I was pleased that we were acknowledged for the policy and procedural approach. And, um, we'll continue to work towards that end.
Thank you. I, just again, for members of this board, the Act one fifty-three waiver, correct me if I'm wrong, really is a, a item that will be brought forward to the CCSU board. This is more an informational awareness for U forty-six. Those of us who serve on the CCSU board will, we're, we're glad to see this. But again, it's, it's a collaborative, uh, energy that's happening across our supervisor union that, that makes this possible. And thank you for you and your team's leadership in making this happen. I see the Secretary of Education's little Post-it note that's on here also, that was, uh, kind of heartening, but, uh, nevertheless, it's, it's, it's good, it's good work that, that we're able to do because it really is, it's in the best interest for our district for this to occur. It's in the best interest of our students for this to occur. It's in the best interest of our staff and administration for this to occur. And, um, I just wanted to chime in on that, so.
Thank you for saying that. I think, uh, it really is, um, the EJW, EA's work with negotiations and the Board Council's work, um, to have a unified salary schedule now is really helpful. I, I think the state just acknowledged the hard work that's gone into aligning our system so that we can continue to provide services in the most efficient and effective way. So it's, it's good news. And thank you, Jack, for recognizing the work that made it happen.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments about Act one fifty-three? So let's move on then to the next item, which is our task team assignments and annual work plan. The, the task team assignments and annual work plan are included in the org notes here. But just, I want, I'm gonna read these out so we can get them captured for our, again, our RETN audience here. The, the, uh, throughout the supervisor union, we have, uh, task teams that have been formed. Some, and, uh, these are standing teams where there are topics of interest that affect all districts and boards in, in the, in the various districts here. We've heard earlier conversation this evening, is this a communications, uh, uh, task team responsibility? Communications is one of the task teams that we work in inside of CCSU. On the, those that serve on this CCSU task team, uh, Al Bombardier, Liz Supin and Gary Baker are on the communications. Those who serve on the policy committees to make sure, again, uh, our district policies are, are really CCSU policies. And we, we work on these, uh, cross-district wise. Brian Donahue and Gary are our representatives for, uh, policy. Leaders at work, uh, that standing committee, uh, tackles, amongst other things, some of the cross-board training and items that are the organizational structure and, and direct CCSU central office types of things. So we, we deal with new board member orientation or superintendency evaluation types of things that are in there. And, and we, we take, we, we take that in and work cross-district on, uh, for codifying those initiatives to ensure that they're consistent throughout. Um, Al Bombardier and myself serve on that, that Leaders at Work Committee. Negotiations, uh, again, are, as, as the superintendent just described, we negotiate with our, uh, teachers and support staff associations for, for contracts. Again, in, in, in this, by, by law, it's the, the, the school boards, uh, issue, um, contracts to associations. And so we're, we serve on these negotiations committees to make sure we have consistent contracts across all our districts here. Aaron and, and Jack, myself, serve on, on that negotiations committee. Just as an aside, we enter this year, uh, FY fifteen or the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen and the first year of a two-year contract with our teachers' association and the first year of a three-year contract with our support staff. So a lot of good work had, had gone in place on those negotiations teams, um, unified, um, pay. Unified, um, pay, you know, unified contracts, et cetera, have made this, uh, has been a win-win both for the associations and for our school boards. Then there's some, some, uh, U forty-six unique responsibilities that we have. Brian Donahue serves on the CTE corp where we have, when we make business decisions about, uh, properties or, uh, programs that, that are CTE unique. Brian serves on that board. The, uh, Niask, uh, U forty-six, Aaron serves as that responsibility, working with that, uh, New England, with the New England Association of Secondary
Schools and Colleges.
Schools and Colleges, okay. We, we touched on this earlier when we talked about the, the board visioning. Uh, that's, that's a team that, uh, Alan, um, Brian and Liz helped facilitate with us and where we wanna be going with that in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. We'll look to their leadership to provide guidance to us. And then, uh, Al has taken up a, a special interest item for IT liaison and, and some of the work that's going on there to, to, uh, as, as we've talked about data management systems and, and, uh, online reporting and, and to be a, a point of reference for us on these discussions, so. So those are our, our, our board task teams for this year. The, these are posted on our website, I believe. So in case anyone out there who's watching or, or some of us who say, oh yeah, who serves on that negotiations? Who's on our policy? We can refer back to that as well, okay?
So, Jack, if we wanted to, I'm just curious, if we wanted to say have alumni, if you wanted to kind of start really devoting some energy to that, would that be a task team sort of thing?
That might be something we could absolutely consider. Um, if we want to formalize that as a standing, you know, a, a little U forty-six subcommittee, we could take, we could take a look at that, uh, and structure how we wanna do that organizationally. But then I also, we should have a, a charter in place about what, what this team does and how we're gonna interface with administration and what's, kind of our, our goals are and what, what timeframes we wanna establish for this.
And, and a task team could be something that, you know, might, might be a task team for, for one year.
Yeah.
Kind of get, get lift and then
Right, right. Uh, that's why I say, uh, to have a charter in place that, that, you know, it's, it's, this task team forms up. It's deliverable coming out of that task team is this set of actions or outcomes. And then that team could dissolve or would reform into a different team depending on what the follow-on actions could be. But, but something along that line.
It might be a good year too, since you have some added capacity because we won't be in negotiations this year. So it might be a nice way to, uh, use the energy.
But, but yes, that, that's something.
If I could just, you know, help the, this board understand the reason why it's on your agenda. As Jack said, this, these are CCSU board task teams. CCSU, I think it's about five years ago now, formed this governance structure where the work could be done with board members representing these areas. So it's sort of a, again, a shared service model of delivery. So, um, it's provided a lot of cross-training, um, and it has really enriched our capacity, to get a lot of important work done. The reason why it's on your agenda tonight is to look at these committees through a local lens. So when you look at it, one of the questions you might have is, well, the CCSU board evaluates the superintendent. That's their responsibility. How do you inform that? Well, the next page is your CCSU annual work plan. And you see each of the areas that have task teams associated with it. Policy and negotiations, communication, board visioning. And those are the areas where you see a direct correlation between what is the identified work for the coming year. And this was an opportunity to talk about, well, here's the work. You see the flip side of that page has your superintendent's evaluation and an opportunity to make that connection so that you're involved as individual board members through your work in U forty-six through a task team that works on this at the SU level. Because it's our, sort of our response to a very wonky governance structure of this thing called an SU. But I think it's just really important that when you go to your task team meetings and you talk about whether it's communication or policy work, um, or board visioning, that you can talk about what you have in common in those areas, what you share as a charge moving forward. And to have that be informed by this board. You know, what are the big communication topics? What are, are the big policies that we're gonna be working forward with? How does that communicate back to the local board level? Because sometimes we have these board task team reports at each of our meetings. And they sort of are reported out that we had a meeting, um, the SU board will look at a policy. Uh, we'll see it at first reading. But to be very clear about what the connections are between where you inform the work and then how it results through the different venues of the organization. Did that make sense, what I just described? So it's, it's that opportunity right now and certainly in the area of, um, policy. You know, the SU board will be seeing some, uh, procedures, not that that's approved at the SU board level, but because they've, uh, given direction that they'd rather see our wellness policies stay skinny, no pun intended. Uh, a very robust procedure, um, to guide us to make sure we capture the spirit and intent of the policy. Uh, so that'll be, uh, of, in this coming fall. SU board work, an opportunity for you to see that and inform that at first reading. Will be something that'll be on your agenda. So it really guides a lot of the agenda planning and agenda work moving forward.
So Judy, if I put it maybe in a different terms, see if I capture what you're saying is we've, we've been practicing very much of a one-way communication about our committee work to the board?
Yes.
And we wanna try to tease out much more of a two-way process? And I think as we do that, it would be, it'd be reasonable to challenge ourselves to do that through an appreciative inquiry basis? So that we're not kind of stuck in that deficit of like, here's what I think is broken, but here's where I think we really succeeded, like in communication or, you know, rather than looking at those deficits, if we sort of practice, um, the inquiry of, this is what I saw, this is what I've discovered, this is how, this is what's worked. I think that could, it could build off of a year of investment that we made.
Yep.
And start a much more dynamic liaison kind of element rather than a, than a distant serving and coming back and saying, this is what other people are working on? Because they're really working on our behalf.
Right.
It's just we, I don't think any of us wanna volunteer to be six places at once.
Right.
And, and you've influenced the other boards. PC decided last Monday, uh, to work with some board training on appreciative inquiry as well. In communications, the new work moving forward is public relations and engagement. The mantle for that, it could be appreciative inquiry, it's shared among boards. Some of you had more opportunity for training than others. So you play a very key role in your attendance on that committee as far as helping to frame whatever engagement topics will come forward, whether it's the beginning stages of proficiency-based learning, or the shift in our wellness policy and some of those procedures to help people understand that direction. And what board members do better than, I mean, I think your primary, for me, the thing I appreciate the most is, we all get, um, we're immersed in our language, just like you are in your job and each of your technical fields. And which you can help so much through the communications venue is put it in the language of parents and community members when we come at a topic, you know, whether it's standard space reporting or, and really be, help us flesh out those communications and bring in that engagement piece. And I, I think one of the other most valuable pieces of U forty-six board is that you have so many high school students and CTE students that can lend much to enrich the conversation and to be available, uh, for the public at large or parent groups to hear from, directly from students, you know? So when you're in those meetings, to think about that two-way piece and, um, just have this conversation before you go in. Because we're creating charges for our task teams and timelines and deliverables so that we're shared and they'll correlate to what you're looking for in the work plan. Helpful?
Okay.
Yep, good.
Any other questions, comments on, on that? The, uh, the annual work plan, uh, our superintendent has reviewed quickly, but again, it's included in our org notes tonight, uh.
Can, can I just ask a question with that? And probably I'll have an opportunity, um, but ask it to see if there's others on this board that are interested. So access control has gone into which, in Essex Junction?
All four schools.
All four schools in Essex Junction and in Westford?
And in Westford, although, um, I think they're not going to use it in the same way. The procedure might be different.
I, I think it's just, you know, with the, that constitutes a lot of our inflow, um, that will have that experience. So they'll have it all through Essex Town and now through Essex Junction and through Westford. So that's gonna be ninety percent of our freshman class next year will have an access control experience. I think it would be nice to have as part of the annual work plan is to conclude the year with some type of first-year assessment, some type of data set that talks to us about it because it's going to be an agenda topic for us. Yeah, you just, it's just like one of those things. It's sort of as you, as they implement before us, people start to come with a new set of expectations than they didn't, than they had before.
Mm-hmm.
We haven't really seen it with Essex Town, but now we're at, we're, we're well past the tipping point.
Right.
So.
And, and I think you're spot on. The Prudential Committee talked about, you know, gathering evidence, uh, ser, through their surveys. That was some of their purpose in attending the open houses, to understand from parents, at least what's the immediate feedback, um, for how it's being implemented. You know, the question is, is the model that, um, was put in place in second semester here at CTE and, and the high school, along with your front entrance conversation, I think there's a natural way to have that conversation. Uh, because there will be people coming in having a different expectation for access control because of their experiences at the K, K eight level now. So timely and important and expands the continuum. So, um, that would be a really important conversation.
And, and I think that it's fair that it's, that we need to see the track record. So it's not an FY sixteen budget development issue for us.
Right.
But FY sixteen is going to, is going to be when we have really good, strong data about access control.
Mm-hmm.
So that in itself is an answer to why it, you know, why we may not be discussing it preemptively.
Right.
Because that would be January, that wouldn't be a lot of experience.
There's not enough, not enough time. And also, um, you know, I think it's something, when you think about your summit in June.
Yeah.
How you include that in your conversation.
Good point.
So there's different ways to gather that information and that would be a wonderful opportunity. So it's, it's, I'm just loving this conversation because it's wonderful to see the task teams provide value to individual boards to what you have in common. And there's much more in common than there's ever been before. So to continue to do the work and have it divided up so that our board meetings can be shorter and our task teams can do the work outside of the board meeting, makes a lot of sense because that's where you can really delve into the nitty-gritty of some of these topics.
And those task teams, I would imagine, have the liberty to bring in stakeholders from the community to be part of those teams in a way that the board doesn't. But that, that could be really important to get those stakeholders at the table early as opposed to late.
Mm-hmm.
Judy, where do we stand on student reps for the task teams that have student participation?
So communication, I have two.
Okay.
And in the policy, I'm not sure if there's been an assignment made there.
Okay.
Uh, so that next time you meet with student council and, and Rob for you as well, if there's anybody from student coun, and I just use as an example, there might be a student has a passion in communications or policy. When Liz said that, Jack had the foresight of involving student reps, uh, on two of the task teams two, two years ago.
Couple of years ago, yes.
And, uh, they were invaluable members of our task teams.
Sure.
Um, so I, you know, continuing that and Rob has generated a lot of support and interest, so.
September third is when we meet first, oh, hold.
Yep, policy.
Okay.
Be the next.
All right.
I, I do challenge us to be intentional at coming across topics or addressing themes that we believe specific stakeholders could give us valuable information. Still working on a model of sort of attendance and spontaneous contribution.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that, that's really asking for a lot of investment from someone not really understanding what their payoff, their contribution will be. Is sort of show up and maybe the next topic that we talk about is going to be relevant and you could really add something. I think we, I think we're, we should be held accountable in saying, let's come up with a really good question.
Yeah.
And then let's go to student council and ask them about these questions, but then also open it up afterwards. I, I think we sit back and we, we plan these meetings and we sort of feel like we've, we're done. We've got our representation.
Right.
And we don't even necessarily have full participation of the members. And so, um, I, I think it's, it's challenging ourselves to meeting people where they are.
Network.
Yeah.
And think outside of the way traditional engagement has.
We could even just give a question to Rob who's meeting with them anyways and says, you know, the board's really interested in knowing this from you.
You get sixty responses.
Yeah, and, and it's, I think it's a lot, it shows a lot more of the, of the truth that we value their input than selecting a person to, to come.
Surround a task team.
But I'm not, and I'm not against the task team. I, I think that, I think that works out well too, it's.
I think too, we can think in terms of technology more as well, as far as, we have the capacity to survey every student in the school.
Yeah.
You know, we, we, we create surveys, you know, around whatever topic is you want student input. You know, we have a parent portal, survey parents. There's different ways to gather, engagement's different now in the twenty-first century.
That's a good point.
So there's different ways to, to get that information. You should, I don't think we should ever use one way.
Right.
Certainly face-to-face is, um, great. And certainly board meetings aren't. I mean, those chairs are always open and it's every board, not unique to your board, every board across the state, there's three hundred school boards.
And I'd say when they're full, it's very rare that it's in an appreciative inquiry.
Yes, that's my, my experience as well.
Different subject? Just a few subjects or do we have time? Let me, let me move, we'll go on into future agenda items. We'll, we'll, I'll open, open it up there. I do wanna finish up, uh, our task team, unless it's a task team assignment or, okay, then we'll hold off on that, Al, okay? Any other questions on annual work plan, task team assignments? Okay, good. Then let's move on to consent agenda. Tonight we have the approving of the warrants, approving the meeting minutes, affirmation of the parent-student handbook, recommendation for professional employ, uh, appointment, refunding bond municipality certificate, copier, printer lease agreement, Essex Rotary donation to the VIA, a, uh, approval of a letter of resignation and a request for activity support recognition. Uh, is, are there any one particular topic that we would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Your professional appointment, you, it just came in, so you haven't had an opportunity to see that information and brought it.
Okay, so shall we?
Pull that.
Pull that one, and that was the, um, approval of the professional appointment?
Jack, I, I just had a question about the, what exactly are we doing with the copier-printer lease agreement? Are we basically just saying that you're going to just try to, to get bids on a new, is that what we're, what are we consenting on?
So what, what happened was, um, I think it was three years ago, um, we entered into agreement to bring all of our copiers into one, um, contract.
Mm-hmm.
This year we're looking, it would, one, it's time to update that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some of our copiers have aged, um, it's time to replace. While we're at it, we're looking at, is it time now to bring in printers too? So as we're looking at this contract, let's include the copiers again, once again, for renewal. And let's also bring in printers, because printers were never included before. And the service component, we find that when we don't include everything, those costs rise. So it's an ability to stay cost-effective. So what the, um, agenda item is saying is we put in a not to exceed number. If we can negotiate, uh, a contract
For fixed price, yeah.
With a fixed price, not to exceed that number, it will bring us in, um, at a cost savings. And so therefore, you know, if you could give us that authority to begin that negotiation and.
Is the number that's in the budget?
It's a number that you saw in the.
Forty, whatever that, whatever that number was, I saw that number. So the question I just had was, because it looked like they, that, there was looking, so when you said in the, in the notes, adding printers, we weren't talking about expanding.
Additional, no, no.
That, that was just my question was.
Just including, I should have said, including printers.
Okay, so it was, it was a contract that just cover, covered copier service.
Yes.
But now you want to cover the existing, gotcha.
Includes. Yes, include printers as well.
Thank you.
Can I pull the student handbook, please?
Pull the student handbook.
I actually had a question on that as well.
Uh, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed on our agenda for this evening? Uh, pulling the, uh, student, the parent-student handbook affirmation and the request for professional appointment.
So moved.
Moved by Al, so we have a second.
Second.
Second by Brian, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes, six-nil. Uh, uh, the parent-student handbook, Brian, we pulled that one.
Yeah.
Um, it's hard to know whether there's been any changes to this, so, uh, are there any changes from last year?
Yes, and the changes are bold or italicized, I'm not sure if it's showing up, but there's a note somewhere that says that.
Okay.
Um, so there's a way to see it, some of the changes, um, include the acknowledgement right up front for signature, um, under our tobacco, we've included, um, what do they call the electronic cigarettes, what are they?
E-cigarette.
E-cigarettes.
Yeah.
Uh, in our, um, in our list of, um, things that can't be brought on campus. Um, those, anything else come to mind, those two came to mind right away.
Those are the most significant. And just to tie into that, um, Al and I had a little side conversation a little bit, a few minutes ago in, in terms of the parent-student handbook, in terms of policies, uh, mentioned to the staff at our faculty meeting today that September third, not the first Wednesday, but the second Wednesday, we'll have in our advisory a covering of the weapons policy and the drug, alcohol and substance policy and students will sign off in their advisories and the advisors will, uh, keep track of the acknowledged signatures.
That was, I just, yeah.
So that's, that's an update on.
Just kind of.
It's so, the, there's no change to the attendance policy, there's always been a written note requirement following phone notification?
Say that again.
So following phone notification, all absences from school require a written explanation upon the student's return. That's always been the policy?
Yeah.
Okay, what?
Through.
Well out of compliance of that, so, so, so the attendance line is not the final notification? It needs to be followed up in writing from, by the parent?
That's what we would like to see, yeah. Hasn't been that all the time, no.
Yeah. And the phone, the phone line is, see what that does is it gets into a, uh.
Goes into power school.
Right, but what it, what I'm saying is it, it tends to validate what voice messages we get that may or may not be authentic.
It also captures forgetful parents.
What?
Self being one of them.
I owe you a few letters, I think.
And then there's a, no, it, I guess it's, it must have been something that's always been there that just for, I, I've, um, I, I guess it's the alphabetical ordering, so that now it's on the front page or something like that. Um, but, um, it's a, it's a process that I honestly haven't been familiar with, with, you know, going into my fifth year of a student, so it's been hiding in plain view.
So can you just tell me one more time, because I'm, I'm, where are you looking at the hand, these changes to the handbook, by the way?
Uh, there's a hyperlink in the org notes that goes to it and it's also available for many of the pages, school front pages.
In the closure of the consent agenda.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, because my thing was just with all the discussion that we've had about the handbook and the acknowledgement and I, I did not in detail look at the handbook, which I would really like to do, to see what, exactly what the changes are. But, um, but Rob, what did you just say about what your plan was, is you're going to get?
September third, students will hear, have a conversation, ask questions and sign off on acknowledging they've heard what the weapons policy and drug, alcohol, substance policy is.
So we'll like, we'll be getting like a, an actual signature from everyone?
Yes, a paper form, signature, advisors keep the signatures.
Is that kind of the same thing that?
We don't have the students sign off, but, um.
But you had had that other system, I remember we talked about your system last year.
We go into all the, yeah, we.
Can you just speak up a little bit so we can all hear your question, I'm sorry.
I was just saying that I think we heard from you last year.
Right.
That you, you had had a little different system in place already, which was a little more.
Right.
Okay.
What Rob is saying is we're more in line.
Okay.
We're, we're focusing on the, the more sticky issues and they're, they're getting a chance to ask questions.
Okay.
And we're bringing it to the forefront. We don't ask for signatures, but we have a hundred percent signature.
Okay.
On our handbook, because I can pull students from programs.
Okay. And then anyone that, that doesn't sign off, that say not at these meetings, will follow to get their signatures, so it.
Well, if they're absent on the third and the tenth, they would be present.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think what I'm looking for is from the administration is bottom line, do we have a hundred percent compliance with signatures? The students agree and concur that they will follow the policies. All I'm looking for is that affirmative communication to, to me that, that that has been done. I think that would address some issues and, uh.
Well, with advisory, we have that format to do it.
Right, and I think it, I'll be happy when I get it from both EHS and CTE.
Mm-hmm.
So I look forward to that correspondence.
And I think it's just good to clarify, because we have talked about it a number of times and I think we've now really reached kind of a, which is great. We've kind of worked through this and now we're, because for the public to know, it's just good because we have, this will hopefully, um, prevent or forestall issues that we have had with students coming forward and saying, oh, I wasn't aware of that. So hopefully this will be, that will help.
Right.
And I think the point that Rob makes is EHS up until now hasn't even had a structure to have those conversations. And now with the advisory, say, and he's taking the initiative to ensure that conversation will happen and that review will happen.
Right.
Aligned to the signature.
Yeah. If, if we don't get a written signature, then there should be someone, some administration, administrator who's responsible in, in writing that, that, that that student understands what the policies are. We can't get a signature.
So, uh, any further discussion on the s- parent-student handbook?
No.
Make a motion to affirm it?
To affirm it, to, so Brian makes a motion to affirm the parent-student handbook as listed. Uh, Aaron will second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that passes six-nil. The other, uh, item that was pulled from the consent agenda was the recommendation for a professional appointment. I did get the data that I've passed around to all board members here, uh, for a recommendation for, uh, Deb Alden to be a French teacher at EHS, the pertinent data is, is included, included here. Any further questions for this professional appi- if, do we, I would prefer to review this and approve this tonight. Um, is, is particularly saying the anticipated start date is today, right?
Right.
Much appreciated.
S- so.
Since we had that resignation.
Um, I'll make the motion to approve this particular.
I'll second it.
And the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes six-nil, so we're done with those consent agendas then and so forth. So now, let's move on to the future agenda items. Um, a couple of things that, that had come up, one that I had was, uh, the grading scale discussion. And I see that as being part, um, Principal Reardon of, of the follow-on work that we're going to be hearing about proficiency-based graduation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, is that meet with your, I, I, I think, I think those kind of topics dovetail together. And, and I know you're going to lead us through a series of discussions on proficiency graduation, proficiency PBLs, et cetera. Follow-ons from what we've had tonight about, um, our learning, our learning strategies, so.
So, so grading scale?
Grading scale to be part of that, incorporated as part of that discussion, which if, we would have again at our next board meeting in October.
October.
Right.
Yep.
And I'll tie in the grad requirements with the grading, so it's.
Sure, sure. This may be a topic, um, I, I know this is a topic that there's high board interest in. I would expect that if, if there are certain things that we would like to have, uh, Principal Reardon address in his October presentation to us, send those, send those topics to me so I can make sure that they're, uh, understood through administration and properly addressed, uh, Rob, when you come back and, um, see us in October, okay? Al, you had said, um, there was.
I just had a, I just wanted to make one point, I, I don't often get, you know, I don't often see some of the excellent work that is being done here, but I hope the principals recognize, the administration as well. Item number thirteen in our org notes talked about some of the significant work that Vince Canello and the IT department has accomplished. And there are times when you just have to say, you know, that's an outstanding job and thanks. Uh, some of the work that they did this summer, just to review for a second here. They developed the Microsoft server that phased out twenty-two Novell servers. This is reducing the amount of, of, uh, maintenance, ongoing maintenance, uh, contracts for different software at twenty-two boxes, I mean, it was huge. Increasing the reliability, the IT infrastructure for the, the whole complex here. So significant amount of work, switching over to solid-state drives in all of the laptops. This, you know, you're looking at quantum leaps in reliability. And, uh, talked with, uh, Rob and his people at different times, they're just doing an outstanding job. Just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
You're here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Perfectly intact this summer.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
I agree, um, and I also would acknowledge that our custodial and maintenance folks not only got everything that they had to do, but they were ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
Which is very impressive for the size of the campus.
Yeah, that's good.
And the place looks great as we open our doors.
Yeah. Yeah, big difference.
Good. Thank you, thank you for those kind words, Al. Any other, uh, future agenda items?
Is there some NEAS work on the mission statement that the board could circle into?
I'll have to guess, whatever NEAS work, we can, I gotta meet with Sue and book over what we need to do.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we want to talk about the formation of an alumni task team, is that a calendar, should we calendar that for October?
Um.
Or? I don't know when we would talk about that.
I'd be happy to join that conversation.
Yeah.
And Rob, are they, or Judy, doesn't matter, are they doing the S-BAC this year?
Yes.
But that's no more pilot, this is a.
Oh, no, it's the real deal.
Field and, and we're all set up for that, we need anything discussed, I guess, no, because there was some issues last year, right? As there always are in piloting, I mean, everything is good, or do we need to talk about it?
We are going to continue to meet, but I just say I'm a, I feel a lot better now, knowing we piloted it.
Mm-hmm.
Than if I was one of the visiting schools that was watching.
Right.
And furiously taking notes, so I think we'll be, uh, better prepared and better poised for this assessment. So we don't, we don't lose instructional time unnecessarily.
Right.
And I think that was the huge takeaway from the pilot.
And Bob, um, was there a decision made as far as how technical centers, is it sending schools that'll be, uh, administering the S-BAC or?
It's all over the board right now, I'm going to work through the principal's organization. Um, I think that because EHS did such a great job last year of piloting it, they're further ahead of knowing what the possibilities are and they're getting to, maybe we should do this in classrooms quicker. Lot of schools didn't pilot it, so they're benefiting from Essex High School's work, but, um, I don't think they've answered it for themselves either. If they go that direction, tech centers will have to play a role, because we just won't be able to. So, um, it's one of our, it's one of our priorities for the year.
So, so I want to circle back a little bit, um, Aaron, we talked about an alumni task team. We will add that to our agenda for October, formation of that, of that, okay? Make sure that we've got that closed. The other topic that I, I had mentioned earlier tonight and it's in, in our org notes, item number four, which is the, uh, EHS and CTE will have their open house on Thursday, September eighteenth. So one of the things that happens between now and our next board meeting is this September eighteenth open house night. Uh, I had mentioned this might be a great opportunity to engage the community about, uh, to, to keep momentum going on our, uh, appreciative inquiry initiatives. And what I'm looking for are, uh, maybe Liz, this is something you could help lead from a communication standpoint. What is it, if we want to take advantage of the meeting, of that time, that evening, being up with, uh, uh, Principal Reardon and Director Travers and, and introduce, say we're board representatives and, and, and craft a message out about where we want to go so we can have a, a, a broader engagement next June to get that word out. Uh, I would be, I would be willing to deliver that message, although I think we might need two people, because they might be going on si- simultaneously.
At least close to.
Very close, close to.
Yeah, close to.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to deliver that message.
Okay, so, so maybe, um, with, with, with the board's approval, uh, I'd like to maybe remand this to Liz to come up with the message and Liz, you and I can work on how we're gonna, who's going to deliver it to CTE and who's going to deliver it to EHS?
Sure.
Okay.
And will maybe Brian pass it by you, just so you, for another, I, 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 but yeah, sure.
So I just, uh, i- i- if that's okay with the board to, to pursue that, I, I don't want to miss this opportunity and, and we do want to get something going. and we do want to get something going quickly, and this is a good chance to make that happen, so, okay?
Also, uh, SU Board will be adopting the budget calendar, it's very similar to what you've seen before. If you've had time to look at the U forty-six dates and you feedback, so that your SU Board members have that information prior to the adoption date of the SU Board meeting
Right.
will be helpful.
Yeah, I think with that, I think our next meeting actually has to be a time to set guidance, um, because the principals start working at the end of, you know, going into November. So we have to set guidance, we probably will have ADM and enrollment, um, program numbers settled at that time, everything, um, ROTC.
We can have school chase, school choice updates, dual enrollment updates, things of that nature, which will play.
December's the new deadline for school choice? Didn't they roll back the deadline?
They're, they're talking about it, they haven't changed it yet.
It hasn't officially occurred.
No, nothing official, but I think the struggle over when it's being implemented currently in March is killer. Uh, and the communication around it as well, and funding as well. I mean, I think there's some pieces, but I, I was pleased to receive that report, included it in, um, the org's view to see the increase in school choice that's happened since the laws passed, and to really think of it from an appreciative lens as far as what are the kinks that still need to be worked through so that we can continue to promote this as a pathway for kids, um, who are looking to make that change. I was proud to see Essex High School as one of the, um, three high schools that many students were gravitating to. The trend seems to be that students are gravitating to larger schools. You know, to ask ourselves why, and what do we continue to do to, um, provide that opportunity?
Well, the, I, and I think just as a note, probably not to anybody inside the house, but that is definitely data that's starting to point to people pursuing the opportunity. We should be looking to try to find some data on what the retention is of those students that switch to that, and then whether there are graduation changes at all. Because people switch, and then they switch back, and then they switch to another school. I'm not sure we're getting the outcome that we want, or are we hoping for?
So that's one of the pieces of data that we've included in our new admin-informed data system, so we're able to.
That cohort, to see what.
That cohort, yeah.
The biggest obstacle we've had in our very limited two years for families after the paperwork has been submitted in March and approved is the realization in the summer of they need the transportation. So, quick story, and then I'll stop, we had twenty, we are at a cap by paperwork. A week ago, we ran numbers, and there were sixteen enrolled. In the last week, even though our official deadlines are over, I've had two further inquiries, which we've moved forward based on the desire because of the opportunities and reputation of the school. We're sitting at eighteen right now.
And I, I think from the org notes from Grant's update, we might be able to be looking at some type of architecture, um, architect's directions
That's right.
At that, um, October meeting. And we'll have the school report data
Yep.
in the org notes, which usually then has probably a value to have some type of high-point, um, discussion or embedded in principals' reports, somehow, there's usually some nuggets of information that point towards either continuous improvement or areas that might require budget resources.
Uh, I want to circle back, Principal Reardon, on the point we're talking about, school choice. The, the board, um, has set that, that choice limit to twenty seats, right? Total. If, if, what I've heard, the discussion earlier about students gravitating towards larger schools, uh, maybe part of the, the follow-on work is, does the board need to go back and reanalyze that twenty-seat limit? Whatever data administration would like to make a recommendation, I think the board needs to address that as well.
Fair enough.
Twenty, twenty has been the number we've had for the past couple of years, is it, is it time with some of these changes and the data that we're seeing? Maybe sometimes reality sets in, and what they register, the, the spring of enthusiasm leads to a fall of discontent, and, uh, not all the, all the students come in, but nevertheless, you know, that, that number twenty is something that this board has set, and if we need to go back and readdress it, we need some, uh, a recommendation from administration.
I do know the regional superintendents are talking about at least having some kind of common means established on how that number is set.
Right.
And that's important work that I think will continue.
When's the deadline for notification of retirement?
The new deadline within the contract, um, as far as a benefit would be concerned, is November first. Um, so hopefully, um, the sooner we know, knowing that there's going to be, um, possibly more people retiring this year, because this is the first year of the health benefits, spousal benefits that will be available, uh, to folks, so knowing that we may have a very busy hiring season, and being able to plan around that, that's going to be a huge body of work for us. Schools and sure, thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, it will be a huge churn inside the budget, probably, if, if not this year, next year will seem seismic in comparison to what we've done before.
Um, Judy, I just have a really quick question for you.
Memorandum that you had in the org notes?
Yes.
From Rebecca Holcomb?
Yes.
I thought that was really, really interesting. My question to you, is this something, and I, I didn't have time to kind of see where this was posted, I'm sure it's posted on the state. This is just something we had in our org notes, Vermont's commitment to continuous improvement from the Secretary of Education, and, um, I wondered if this was something that we could put in the Essex reporter, or is this something that would be appropriate to put on the CCSU website?
It is on the CCSU website.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to.
Yeah, it's, uh, one, thank you for bringing it up, because I thought our secretary did an outstanding job in helping parents understand the law to accountability system. Uh, I think her question set in there will be important as well, and we're required to send that information along with my letter to parents
Oh, that's great.
for all the title students.
That, that's wonderful, I was just wondering how we could.
Yeah, so that communication is going
That's great.
uh, going out, and, uh, and will be posted as well, thank you for bringing it up, Delary.
Any other future agenda items? Then what I'd like to do is, uh, move into executive session for the purpose of a personnel matter, do we need to make that a, a motion?
Uh, yeah, that's a motion.
Do we have a motion to go to executive session? Moved by Aaron, uh, seconded by, by Gary, thank you. So we're moving to executive session.